The following program is sponsored by the Greek Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Regional Funding Commission Meeting, August 19th, 2020.
Andy, you can do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on command and principle, with liberty and justice for all.
And can we open up for public comments? Period of voting comments, general public, any discussion of the defendant's, the debate about an added grave during either of these items of agenda, and you have three minutes each. So, public comments? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, you may want to do a roll call. I want to make sure everybody's here. That's typical in most meetings. Are you going to bypass that? I didn't want to interrupt.
You're interrupting right now, George.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I did not receive an agenda by mail for today's meeting. I filled out the request for the agenda in the meeting packets earlier. I want to know if there's some kind of problem now. Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission member McKenzie has yet to correct her non-ADA compliant sidewalk at her home in Lund. The LDS church spelled current better in sidewalk just a short distance from her home, and they meet the federal ADA standards. The sidewalk runs parallel to State Highway Number 318. Years earlier, she helped adopt the code and knows better. She needs to comply or resign. The laws pertain to everybody. Mr. Chairman, Keith Carson is allowed in an RV and is renting his space out for it on this trailer park located on Orson Avenue. When did he apply for a special permit for the RV to be placed in the trailer park? Who approved it? What did he pay? Was the renter a construction worker associated with the courthouse jail project or the state highway project as required? I want to remind you, Mr. Chairman, I received two citations for putting RVs on my property, and it looks like depending on who you are, the law does or does not apply, and that needs to stop. Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission of the city to date has not addressed the city code violations by previous and present members of the Planning Commission as well as some of the city councilman and county commission. They need to comply with the city codes that they have, may have formulated and adopted again or resign. The city meeting in White Pine County cannot expect to enforce the law. They have to be compliant with the federal law, in particular, the Age Discrimination Act of 1975, the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and the Civil Rights Act of 1964 Title VI. Mr. Chairman, the new marijuana specialty chair leaf is getting close to opening. The sidewalk on 10th Street on one side that are business is blocked by rocks, a boulder, tree, or shrub. The sidewalk is non-ADA compliant, and the rocks, the boulder, and the greenery is located on the sidewalk right away, which impedes foot traffic, and especially those in a wheelchair. I told Mayor Robertson about the ADA shortcomings months ago, and he told me not to worry about it, that he was being taken care of. The problems still there, still needs to be addressed. Who inspected the project? Who approved it? Horses are still in Central Ely. Against code, I've gone through the permits or the citations from the animal control officer, nothing about horses, only chickens. We have another business, I think that belongs to, if it doesn't belong, that's where Mr. Bullis is running in his office. No sidewalk, that sign is impeding traffic, again, against code. We need to address the violence. Mr. Chairman, the new parking lot design for the convention center does not meet minimum ADA requirement. The center walkway has not been put back in, the heat conditions off the street, especially those in wheelchairs. The center walkway needs to be replaced. Who designed the fiasco? Who approved it? Who is inspecting now? Are they going to adopt that as a final approval? Mr. Chairman, on the end grassy grass on Avenue D and Highway 93, the concrete triangle links have come out. The stop sign has been run over four to five times. The boulder next to the stop sign has been pushed back onto the hampering, on the sidewalk again, hampering passing. It's taken off, it's pushed on, taken off, it's pushed on. It's too narrow. You need to do something about that. That's what the Planning Commission is supposed to take care of.
That's timely.
Okay. I'll be back. Do we have, are there public comment? Okay, we will move on to item A, set for possible action, approval of application for home occupation agreement, Jenny Hamilton, DBA, therapeutic massage, bodywork.
Do I film, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm asking to do a therapy massage at my home, and hopefully get people some mental health and some physical pain relief.
Awesome. You've been, you've been doing some work here in Ely.
Yes, in fact, I had to make this, I was at Crossroads, the massage therapist I was working with decided to retire, and she's got immune system issues. She decided that it was time, and I, I live in Baker, and it wasn't practical for me to drive 60 miles and work one day. And my dream has been to help the community of Baker, my home.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
I was going to ask if we had a massage therapist here in Ely. Somebody had asked me that just a while back.
There's quite a few, yeah.
Okay.
So, parking wise, I didn't look at the, where you're at, but parking wise at the house, everything, you're playing parking spots, or, yeah, I'm assuming you're going to have one or two cars at the most.
Yeah, and there's no noise, noise or disturbance of any kind.
That's good. I don't have any questions, it's pretty straightforward.
It is professional, professional massage therapy. I'm not a stallion.
Motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and move to approve. Oh, sorry, I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we had a motion and a second to approve. Okay, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. To approve, you have a seat.
Thank you so much. I'm so excited.
Okay, item B, approval of parcel map and division of parcel. The applicant is Joe Allen Horton. Subject property is one quarter, section southeast, section 11, township 16 North, range 62 East. Object property is the ABM 010, 9460, that 51, 331 East, Fairview Lane. Purpose is to divide the parcel for the state purposes.
Is there a preference of the land needs to, so we can sort of look at it?
Good afternoon. I was on a bit of survey record for Joe on the parcel map. It's just as the application said, it's as far as state ownership, they were in liquidated property, and she had to buy it for the center and half of it, or the center and two and a half acres of it. So, it looks like the access road is going to be on the southeast side of that property.
Long when he said there are 20-foot private access, which is underlying the other parcels in the area, right?
So, is that, is that zone for, what's the zoning on that?
RA 2.5, I have a question.
Yeah.
Information said.
It's an RA 2.5. So, the only thing I saw here was that they, they had recommended a cullvert be put in to establish for range on that, that access road, so that's not going to be a problem for them to do that, but. No, I don't believe so. You know, that would come into mind when they actually built the approach. I don't know if that has a difference on the parcel map itself. Right, when it starts to, right away, right away commit. Right. Gotcha. And then, just to be clear, the, this parcel, I agree with you, the parcel is not going to share septic system with existing parcel or.
No, no, it's on, on well, on septic.
Okay. At the time, you're trying to pull a milk from her head and get a little bit of address. Any other questions?
I didn't see any problems that splitting the parcel. Those are great questions.
No, we worked out, we got the cullvert.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I was just thinking, your own particular, yeah. How about we approve the.
I'll start.
Question in the room, that the building, that Joe and Brad, Carol, seconds.
Just one second, if you guys, if you're on the building.
If you're going to accept it, can you accept it with the conditions, the cullvert, in other words?
Yes.
Can you, can I enter the recording of it?
No. No, that's just, that's just, that's just a request from the, you know, the Road Department. That's all that is.
Got you, so that would just be a paperwork challenge.
That's all it is.
Okay. I'll change my motion to accept it with the cullvert.
Okay, and second again?
Yes.
Carol? Okay. Had a motion from Brad and second from Carol. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass, you announce, leave.
Thank you.
Next item. Item C, discussion only, heard the building codes with the city of Ely, what I'm having.
So, a little background, I guess, if I may be heard, I just, I've had people approach me and discuss, I think Brad's raised some things before, about the idea of the building codes and maybe revisiting them, and I've heard that Eureka doesn't have a building code, and some other counties don't have a building code, and so, there has been, I've just been getting feedbacks. So, since I do review this before it comes out, I just figured, why not put this on this agenda? Because this body is going to be the one recommending any changes to Ely and White Pine County with regard to building codes and their adoption. So, why not just kind of get it started, we can kind of have maybe an ongoing item on this, you know, because I don't know enough about the building codes, I haven't even heard enough about the feedbacks from people, except for sort of individualized complaints about how restrictive it is, or this is where it is, or this was made, this was tough when I put a garage in, or something like that. So, what I'd like to see happen is, I'd like to see people with expertise in building and are building official, sort of weigh in on this stuff, so we can either say, I think the codes are fine, they, they work for us, they're not that restrictive, those cases that you're hearing about are just individualized things, and most people will run them, or we take another approach and excise parts of it, all of it, none of it, I don't know. I just really wanted to get it on this agenda, there's, it doesn't look like there's anyone here to really address that today, so, but maybe just have an ongoing item, so we can be looking towards the future.
That's a good idea, an ongoing item, because, you know, what I, and again, I hear the same things that you do, as far as, as building goes, and, you know, well, restricted this way or this way, and, and again, I, I don't know everything there is about that either. You know, part of the board, when we made up this new board was, is to try to encourage more building, and, you know, if you hear somebody saying, well, I can't do this because of this building code, or it makes it impossible, we don't have to worry about it in this other part of the state or whatever, I guess I had, you know, I got the same concerns, but again, I'm not educated enough as far as the codes go to understand those issues, and so, I'm with you, I would love to get a group of the contractors together and realistically listen to those issues, and to see if there is actually something that, that, you know, that is an issue, and can we work around that to make it easier for people to come in and make it more attractive, more marketable for them to build houses here that we're in desperate need of. So, yeah, I think that's a great idea, I'd love to, I'd love to see that.
I would too, yeah.
I have a grandson that has a home over in Eureka, and they're out on the flats, they're not right in the town, but they don't have any restrictions, they can do whatever they want to do. I'm not sure I would agree to going that far.
No.
Because you never know what somebody's going to want to do, but, but I think we need to really look at it and do what's best for the majority of the people.
When I looked into this, I found that there were three counties in the state that don't have, adhere to the international building codes, and the three that don't have the minimal population in the state. So, there's a difference there between a city like Ely, Clark County, Reno, and some of our outlying areas that really don't have a lot of construction or building going on anywhere. But I, I agree with our esteemed attorney, that we need to look at this and visit it and see what we can do. My understanding is that it can be the codes, it can be zoning that are issues that restrict this stuff, and we need to open up the discussion so we can get, I'm not the only, I'm not the only realtor that, I, when the meetings come up, I get other realtors that come to me and say, is this going to be brought up, are you going to talk about zoning or building codes and stuff, because we're all trying to get more construction in White Pine County and build the economy, and we are running out of nice homes for sale. We are, our inventory is the lowest I've seen in the last seven years. So, I support this, 100%.
Well, and I think that's, that's another key point, is to bring in the realtors too, to say, you know, seeing what issues they're having too. I mean, I'd like to see as many people as we can to try to, to solve this as a team and try to encourage more, more building in here. I mean, I hear all the time, I mean, at the hospital, like, there's, there were five or six people that are ready to build, I mean, they want a home, and they can just not get, you know, the contractors in here to do that, and the ones that are here are already busy or whatever.
One on one that's already planning for his next year's, pre Kyle Solatman, so he's full for the rest of this year and next year.
And, and again, they don't want modular homes, they don't want, you know, they want stick-built homes that are in here, because they want to make this their home for life, and, you know, these are not cheap homes, they're, they're looking between $300,000 and $400,000 for these houses. So, I, I would love to see some more input in how to make it more fluid, to, to make it more attractable for these builders to come in here, if that's, that's the case. And again, I, I don't know the whole story.
Well, I know that there's a lot of people that come in here looking for jobs, because they like the area, and there's no place to live, so it's kind of hard for them to bring the family. We have people that work out at the prison in different places, and, you know, it's hard when you can't find a place, and your family's over there and you're here, it's not a situation.
President, a, a point of that in the last meeting is that, you know, our, our honor camp would close down, because Ely State Prison is down, last time I heard, it was close to 90, I believe, staff. And, you know, granted, there's a lot of situ, there's a lot of issues that are going on statewide too, it's not all just housing, but there's a lot of issues that are simply housing issues. They just, we cannot provide homes that these people want to live in, you know, we can provide something, a shelter, I guess, in some cases, but, you know, these people would like a nice house.
And it's fascinating to me that we get so many people, and I get them from Washington and California, Oregon, trying to escape what they're living in now, and they, hey, while I found this on the website, 11 acres past the prison, and I said, yeah, and there's power on that property, but Bothwick Road, you don't want to drive along it. You want, you don't want to go that extra mile to get to that property unless you want to convince the county or get your own road grader and bring it in and straighten it out. It's, we have a lot of property for sale, but they, coming from a large city, they don't understand water, power, septic, and those have to be added to a lot of our vacant lots. So, if we can rehab houses here in town, get new builders to come in, getting a developer to come in is extremely hard, because we're so isolated, and that's a nice thing to do.
Are there any specific codes in the IBC that people, that you've heard, that people have complained about? Because I've heard there are a lot of restrictions and, and part of the reason why we don't get builders coming in. I didn't know if there's any specific.
I don't know if the restrictions are as prominent in that reasoning as is the economy in bringing a crew in to build and having a place for them to live. The best situation I had was the guy that did the plumbing for the Holiday Inn Express. He brought his crew in, he bought a house, the crew lived in it, they remodeled it, and he flipped it, and it's a beautiful home. And I, every time I talked to a contractor, I said, come on in, build, buy a house and flip it, do something, take some of the old homes and make them new again, and it's just, it's very hard to get a contractor to agree to come to this community, and it's not the codes, it's just we're isolated, we're very isolated.
Well, I think this is, this will be a great discussion. I had heard, you know, that the, there are some restrictive codes in this, so I think it's a great.
Well, we need to discuss them and find out what can be done, what developers want to do, what people want to buy to come and stay here, so, the ongoing discussion is a great idea.
And one of the things I've noticed, because coming in from Lund, I come in down the Elan Murray, I'm amazed that the homes that are now in the process of either being, I don't know whether they're renovating them on the inside, but they're, they're cleaning them up, and they're painting them, and putting new siding on, and adding, putting new windows in, and it's amazing to me, the number that are actually in that process right now, and, and it looks great, the areas that they're in are nice and new-looking and look fresh, and, you know, it's just really nice to see that happening. I don't know how many houses there are available that that could be done to, but what I'm seeing, I'm really enjoying watching.
We have about 36 to 40 houses in inventory in this county. I'd say about 10 or 12 of those would take massive amounts of financial influence to fix. We do have nice houses for sale, some of them are above the price that someone working at the mine or the prison would want to afford, but we're, we're still getting other people that are coming into the community, that want a nice home, and we'll sell them, and that's fine, but the inventory is getting low.
Well, I think we're going to see a lot more of that, you know, yesterday was, I read that San Francisco, and again, good or bad, from, from that area, but people in these areas that have gone through this pandemic this, this year, in these populated areas are looking to get the heck out of those areas, and they're looking for other areas to move to that aren't near as populated. Now, again, good or bad, whatever, but everybody has their own opinion on that, but the fact of the matter is, is that selling those homes for, you know, a, a two-bedroom and one-bath house in San Francisco for half a million dollars, you've got a fair amount of spending cash to come to Ely, Nevada to, to build a home, a heaven home, so, I, we're going to see that same thing as we did in the housing bubble back, oh gosh, when was it, years, years ago, but, where people were selling houses in California, moving to Vegas, Vegas is moving up here, and I have no doubt that we'll start seeing that again, I mean, I don't know what scale, but I'm sure we'll start seeing that again. But anyways.
I think so too.
I think, I think that we do need to visit this area, and I don't see much more about that, but I do think we need to visit, we need to invite in the contractors and whoever else that has a stake in the game of getting new housing in here, come and invite them in and say, okay, we're, let's listen to you.
Well, everybody has a stake in, I mean, the city and the county, tax-wise, has a stake in this, and it could be beneficial to the county for property taxes and things that are growing, so, I'd be happy to meet and talk and raise issues with both you and Brad, and see what we can come, what kind of agreements we can come, or resign stuff to the commission, make it easier, or, you just took a deep breath.
Whatever you want to do, yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, if you, I just want information, I think we all want information, we may say, oh, it's fine, it's an economic issue, that, you know, the crews can't come here, there's not enough money in it to build two homes, so, that's why they're not coming, the code is okay, I just, I need more information, so.
So, could, could we maybe, since you have a list, could we maybe take one or two out of that list and put those on our agenda for discussion, and everybody try and do some research into it, and ask questions around them, see what they come up with, and bring it back.
Yeah, I mean, once I have the one or two.
But, you know.
It's, it's, it sounds like.
What else you got to do, you know, or.
It sounds like when you're talking about the housing shortage, not a, not a code issue, you're talking about a housing shortage, which has gone on here for a long, long time, and the discussion's always been that they don't want to come in and build, you know. My thinking on that is, you know, there's not a whole lot of restrictions on a size, we don't have restrictions here. You know, you can build a house that's around 400 square feet, we don't have restrictions on sizes of homes, so it's not that, it's not, it's not those kind of restrictions, it's what, what can you build at a price that they're going to want to pay. That, I think, is where your, where your problem is at. It's, the building codes are the building codes, they're the same everywhere you go, they're not going to get any more basic than what you have right now, they'll get more strict. These are the bottom, this is the bottom. So, these are pretty lenient.
Well, I, I think the biggest thing is to put those things to rest, Brad, I mean, if you have people coming to us and say, well, you know, again, I don't know all the facts, but bringing those people together and listening to them, and then ironing that exact point out, that you, you know, there's not much we can do as far as, unless we completely go ahead and change our building codes.
The thing is, contractors, contractors that build houses, they know that. They know that they don't have to build a 2,000-square-foot house.
Right.
They know they don't have to build a 1,000-square-foot house, they know that. It's, it's what's going to be economically feasible for them to do, where they can build it and still make money from it. And I agree with Brad Simpson, and that, that's the difficulty, is bringing people from maybe out of town to come in here and build, if they build one or two, it's not worth it, it's just not. That's the reason that the county went in and, you know, sold off that land down there to build what starts out, I think, is three or four, whatever it is. That's why, that's why they did that, was to, you know, kind of, you know, invite these people in to, to build something, and it's kind of testing the waters, what it's doing.
Right.
And I think what will happen is, is you're going to have people that are going to be, that already have a residence here, they'll sell that, and they're the ones that are going to move out there, and they'll sell the, their, their home that was built in the 50s, 60s, 20s.
Oh, seven.
Yeah, that's, that, I think that's what you're going to see happen.
And I think this is, I, I spoke to Brad about this while I was putting aside a line, I think this is what we're going to see generally, I, I think that his general position is the code is okay, but I just want to run it at the flagpole, you know, I've been hearing these grumblings, these are public meetings, this is a public board, you make recommendations and decisions that affect the zoning, and sort of, you know, hopefully the population increase of, of the area, and so, if there are true issues that we can address, because it's not illegal for us to not have a code, it's not illegal for us to have half the IBC, it may not be recommended, and we may never ever go there, because we're not willing to jeopardize maybe safety or something else, or maybe the aesthetic of, of the area, but it'd be nice to hear before we just close the door.
If you look at some counties, like, I think it's, I think it's Leighton County, Leighton County has, has Perump in it, doesn't it?
No, that's Nye.
Okay, Nye County, a portion of it has building codes, and a portion of it doesn't.
Yeah.
They were forced to have it in Perump, because what happened in Perump, they didn't have building codes, so, the, when they were getting their ISO reports, they're. So the, when they were getting their ISO reports and everything, they were denied. And then they started putting hotels in. And that shot them in the foot. Now, you're gonna have, you're gonna have building codes, you, you know, they wouldn't allow them to build.
Right.
So that, that's the kind of stuff you need to look at when you're, you know, Eureka doesn't have any building codes, but they do if you put in a manufactured home because the stakes involved. See, so you, to just say, we're gonna just abolish, we're gonna get rid of all these building codes, it's really not a good idea.
No, and I would never suggest anything like that. I mean, that's a, you know, free-for-all, but I, there's no way. But again, my thing is, and I don't know all the issues out there, it's just you hear somebody say, it's tough to build a house here. Okay, well, I need, need them to come together and tell me why that's happening before we can address those issues and say, no, that's really not the issue here, that's really not a problem.
I can tell you from experience, it's actually very easy to build a house here, by comparison.
Right.
Well, I've had.
Code-wise and paperwork-wise, try to build one, let's say in Clark County, anywhere in Clark County. It could take you over a year to just get a permit. So here is, a lot of the stuff we can do in two weeks.
Okay. Yeah, so we need to take this one off the list, right? Cause we're just trying to come up with any solution, trying to hear it from every angle, but that was just my suggestion.
It may not be zoning or.
It may not.
It may just be getting builders committed.
Well, I could, I could tell you one thing, I, I don't, maybe you guys aren't aware of this, but the, the city took and, and I'm not sure what zoning is, I wanna say it's an R two fifty, where they actually made, because some of these are actually, they're only twenty-five foot lots, where they could actually build on that lot. So, cause normally that's gonna be five thousand square feet. So that's where you get those, I used to call them shotgun homes, they're real skinny and they're real long.
They're still shotgun homes.
Yeah, okay, and so you'd have a front door and you run, you got a hallway and you come out the back door. Those are the kind, they did that so that people would maybe buy some of these, these lots that are in the city that maybe don't have five thousand square feet. So that they can put something on there and a lot of them still have water, power and sewer on them. That's a big cost right there.
Yeah, it's a huge cost for hooking up that stuff.
And when you, when it comes to those for the will serves, I'll just give you an example. When it comes to will serves, I've been told by many contractors from out of town, our will serve costs are not even close to what they should be. We are so far down.
Will serve, okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna go there, but I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that's, you get people from out of town that come in here and what they, what they're used to paying for a will serve is nowhere close to what we're paying, it's astronomical.
So I mean, I guess my, my big, I mean, I would love to see, and I won't drag this on much more, but we all know that construction, a, a construct, getting a construction loan is very, very difficult. I mean, ultimately, I would love to see a developer come in here, build the house and then sell it to the person. And getting that loan is a heck of a lot easier than trying to get a construction loan on there. And, and ultimately, I'd love to see is try to get a housing developer in here to build a, a, you know, I guess for better words, a tract house area.
Right, yeah.
I think that'd probably be the most marketable next to, you know, what your idea was is bringing the smaller homes for some of these people that don't actually need a, a larger house. But I guess the biggest thing is, is how do we, how do we make that more marketable for them to come in here and do that? You know, because there are people that are in need of these things, but we just can't get that person, that one developer to come in here and say, okay, we're gonna build, other than what we did down in, what you guys did down in, uh, below Sixteenth Street there.
Right.
You know, on a larger, on a larger scale.
From what I understand, that's, that's gonna start moving, right? Cause I, I inquire about that, when we're gonna do something on those lots down there. There's still quite a bit of work to do. But I'll tell you what, I'll bring some stuff in and I'll just maybe, maybe I'll just have Jennifer put it in you guys' box, but I looked up some stuff on these tiny homes. And the reason that people build tiny homes, cause they don't wanna buy an RV, okay? Tiny homes do not meet the building codes. So when you look at those, when you're watching them being built and you see the stairway going up, it doesn't meet the building codes. That's why people build them. They're, it's a way to get, to get around the building codes. So to allow those to come in to a, the city, like the city of Ely, it would be like you're saying, okay, we're, we're done away with the building codes. Cause they're, they're, those have to be registered with the DMV.
Well, I understand that park model homes you're talking about are like that, but there aren't communities that build and developers who have built tiny homes that meet code.
Right, and they, they set, usually what they do is they set up like a, like a trailer park.
Yeah.
And that's where, this area right here, that's inside this area, you can have tiny homes. They don't have it where you can put them anywhere in the city. They're isolated to one area because of, just because of what they are. It's an RV.
Well, that's good information, cause I didn't realize you have to register those with the DMV.
You have to register, yeah. If you go online, if you go, if you spend some time online, even in the state of Nevada, there's NRXs and everything else, they have to be registered with DMV.
Yeah, okay. All righty. Okay, let's continue in this next meeting.
I have to go say, the, the homes or the properties that are on Millamuri up there that are only twenty-five feet wide and a hundred feet long, that's kinda what those little ones would fit.
Yeah, but there, there are tiny homes that are built to code.
Yeah.
And they would, they would fit over lots and that's what I'm hoping, we can get a, like, somebody to come in and build three or four, because they would sell. I mean, we've got kids that are gonna work at the mine, gonna work at the prison, they don't wanna buy a three-bedroom, two-bath home, they just want someplace to park their car and live. And they would look better than some of the stuff we've got on the street right now.
Yeah.
So, we'll, we'll work with it this later.
Should be, be looking at something more even in the area of like a tiny home community area.
Uh, they've done that in, I think Reno and Carson.
Right.
And there might be areas here that could be developed like that. I don't care what you consider a mobile park or not. We have individual lots in the city that require, require, I think, having a tiny home built to code. And they would still sell. So we've got work.
Yeah, we do.
I'll leave it at that.
You good? Okay, uh, I guess we'll move on to item B, approval of minutes from Regional Planning Commission meeting held on July fifteen, twenty twenty.
That was just two things.
You have two things to add, but.
Just, uh, I don't, there's just two spelling corrections, uh, the only thing that I, no, I think, thank you very much for doing those. In section B, uh, let's see. It says, Jason Batte added that his, that this was his main concern as well, and then it just, instead of hi, just says his concern.
Sorry, where were you at? On item B?
On item B, um, about, I don't know, fifty-eight or five-eighths of the way down.
Seven lines up to the bottom of that section.
So you're on page two?
Page three.
Page three.
Page three, item B.
And then on page three, the very last, um, last one, hunts, either stay at motel or they can't.
So that's basically all the clientele from the hunts that they perform, is what it was saying.
Um, yeah, and they just, but it just needs to say, um, instead of how it can't. But.
It's basically where they can't if they're set up on the element of the outside.
Okay.
I'm tempted to approve.
That's great. Um. I don't have enough proof, please.
Thank you.
Andy's got approval. I was gonna second. Okay. Which, correct, I made a motion to approve and I do the, approve, you're all seconded and put it up to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You can have a seat. And we move to last public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I want to tell you again, you need that sound system. I could hardly hear some of you and that's not fair. I don't have a big hearing problem, but I have a problem hearing you guys. You gotta stop that. The committee law says you have to comply with those that have difficulty hearing. Mr. Chairman, um, we talked about code, you have a hazard, environmental hazard just on all of them, and none of you brought that up. You wanna talk about codes, what the heck for? If something's laying right in front of you and you're ignoring it, everywhere you go in this country, you have codes. You have the International Building Code, you have the, uh, international, what is it? The National Building Code, and then the city and the county have adopted the International Building Code, which is tough. I don't know if you know that or not, but you do. Your problem here is you're building this bigger. I've got properties that are greater than twenty-five foot wide, can't use them. Why? Requires five thousand. The five thousand foot rule was put in at a much earlier date when the community was growing and it was for new development. You can't make a person's property worthless, and you've done that to me. So when you hear me speak of anger, that's why. Now you're telling me you can build on a twenty-five foot wide lot? Really? You people better get educated, I'm surprised someone hasn't come after you. It's wrong, folks. Get those codes in front of you, quit talking off the top of your head. Mr. Chairman, speaking of codes, M and B is, should be much wider. When they put in that curb, it isn't the L shape, which is required by code, L shape, eighteen inches wide, should be five feet from the property line, not eleven. You put that triangle in there, people are knocking down the stop sign as well as pushing that boulder out onto that sidewalk alongside the state highway, uh, it's improper. We've not addressed the offensive signs around the community, Mr. Chairman. We need to do that. Permits need to be purchased at the time prior to building. The convention center hooked up their water connection fee and then applied for application. Doesn't cut it. I wanna see if they're gonna pay the penalty fees. Again, the rules have to be the same for everybody, and apparently they're not. Mr. Chairman, I've looked at some of the building code reports, still no building permit for three eighteen on Ely Avenue.
Okay.
You guys got to do your jobs.
Any other public, uh, any other public comment? Okay, with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Some no.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great.